Pledge of Allegiance, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body, City of Seward, by the Nebraska Openings Act to conduct business. A copy of the Nebraska Openings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording process is posted in the meeting room. The participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presidential approach to podiums, city name and address for the clerk's record. Your answer, your remarks to five minutes. Our remarks will be directed to the mayor, we shall determine by whom any appropriate response should be made. The city of Seward reserves rights with just order of items on this agenda necessary, and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Welcome back, Camper, Coleman, Miller, Singleton, Smith, Hendricks.
First item is consideration of draft minutes of May twenty first, twenty nineteen. The motion is second, is any further discussion? Sign off, please, display the votes. Item number two is consideration of approval of draft minutes of special work session on May twenty eighth, twenty nineteen.
Move to approve, second.
The motion is second, is any discussion? Sign off, please, rest of your votes, please display the votes. Items three and four are the consent agenda. The motion is second, is any discussion? Sign off, please, rest of your votes, please display the votes. Mayor's appointment, item number five, reappointment of Corey Miller to the CDBG Application Review Board for economic development for a three-year term. The motion is second, is any further discussion? Sign off, please, rest of your votes, please display the votes. Item six is consideration for recommendation for brutally special designated liquor license for Harry's three oh eight West Second Street Valparaiso for an event of the Seward County Acquavillian on August twenty fourth, twenty nineteen.
Harry's is the first time for him to apply for a special designated license and my organs ask come to the council. There weren't any irregularities or concerns with the application.
Give a motion and a second, make for a discussion. Sign off, please, rest of your votes, please display the votes. Item number seven, consideration of approval of task order number twenty nineteen dash one with J O Consulting Group Incorporated for bridge inspection on East Silkress Drive. Jake?
So, real quick, we don't need to take action on this item. I was informed by the state that they were going to discontinue doing all fracture critical bridge inspections on all fracture critical bridges in the state next inspection, which I thought would be this year's inspection. But that's not true, they have a contract with H D R through this year. So, H D R will be here next week to do the inspections we don't have to do.
Thank you. You good?
Yep.
Alright. Brought you on something in the minutes for that. That works.
Item number eight, consideration for approval of thirty four point five to twelve point four seven K V industrial substation construction project. Garrett Klein with Olson is here this evening to present, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, we have sent along the bidding documents for the substation that will go down on Walker Road and serve the new industrial development. They were preliminary status when we sent them pending a review by the electric department staff. We have had that review, we had a meeting yesterday and we're working on incorporating their comments. Your approval will be pending, I guess, the incorporation of those comments. It'll be a ten M B A substation with four feeders for both the industrial site and then as backup to existing city system. The opinion of probable cost for the work where you can expect the bids to be is about five hundred and ninety-five thousand. That includes a twenty-five thousand dollar contingency allowance, so if there aren't enough changes or issues during the construction process, it would be five hundred and seventy thousand. We're looking to establish the dates to advertise. Bonnie, would it be best to go through these in order? We're looking for the dates to advertise, to publish, to open and to open the bids. And we're looking for a council approval of all those.
Okay, any questions or comments for Garrett? So, item eight A is acceptance and approval of bidding documents. The motion is second, is any further discussion? Sign off, please, rest of your votes, please display the votes. Item B is acceptance of proposed advertisement dates of June seventh, twenty nineteen, or establishment of dates. The motion is second, is any further discussion? Sign off, please, rest of your votes. Please display the votes. Item C, acceptance of proposed bid opening date of July second, twenty nineteen, at two P M. City of Seward, five thirty-seven Main Street, Seward, Nebraska, or establishment of bid opening date time and place. The motion is second, is any further discussion? Sign off, please, rest of your votes, please display the votes. Item A D, acceptance and approval of publication of advertisement on June twelfth, June nineteenth, and June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, in the Seward Independent. Motion is second, is any further discussion? Sign off, please, rest of your votes, please display the votes. Item nine, thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, Garrett.
Item nine is presentation and consideration of designating an alternate truck route. Jake?
Yes, we had this on the agenda a few months ago, just kind of circling back with the state and getting some info from them. Requested information at the last meeting was how many trucks can we expect to use this truck route? Or what's the truck route traffic that we can expect? And then also, if the N D O T had any issue with the horizontal alignments on that west leg of Isaac Walton Road just off Highway fifteen. So, getting answers back on that, just looking at the traffic counts that were available. I believe there was, two thousand fourteen was the last ones that were done that really tracked the amount of truck traffic. And I believe it was somewhere around fourteen to twenty trucks per day on that that would potentially use our route, the alternate truck route. And then further information on the horizontal alignments because right after you turn off of fifteen onto Isaac Walton, there is kind of an S curve that can be hard to negotiate if you're driving a big truck. Again, Tenneco does it all the time, but we just had that question out there. And they didn't have any issues with it, they said if you want to upgrade it, you sure can. I believe that would involve some floodplain permitting, because the floodplain goes all the way up to that embankment. So, we'd have to get a floodplain permit to fill any area in there to straighten out that S curve, if that's what we want to do. So, that's the information I have. Just to clarify again, this is an alternate truck route, this is not a route that is designated for trucks. Trucks do not have to drive on this route. It is a shorter route if you're going if you're going from fifteen to thirty-four westbound or from thirty-four to fifteen southbound. And it also avoids the intersection, which is extremely hard to negotiate if your truck at the intersection of thirty-four, fifteen. Any questions?
Yes.
Is that the main reason why we're doing this is to get rid of that intersection downtown?
Yeah.
Is it worth it for twenty trucks?
There's, I mean, for us, that road on our property is already being maintained by us. We plowed snow all the way out to where County Road two ninety-four comes in. And then two ninety-four is county road and they maintain that. Two ninety-four and Isaac Walton were both built to handle truck traffic. So, from a thickness and structural standpoint, we certainly can handle it. And, you know, it's kind of up to the council to score that or not.
Total cost on our part to do anything to make this happen?
No, we have to put up signs.
Signs.
And a couple of signs on Isaac Walton and two ninety-four, so some hundred bucks probably is going to cost us and some labor. The state will put up the alternate truck route signs on the highway. There is some pretty significant off tracking right next to Jones Bank. So, if you're standing there and the truck is going to turn, you better back up, otherwise your pillows get run over. And there's been some damage on that area, I mean, the sidewalk has cemented whole truck tires. So, to me, it's preserving what we have and, you know, making it a better situation for the majority of the people who are using it. If you've ever been at that intersection and the truck's trying to turn right, if someone's in the left lane, they, I've seen them back up three hundred feet.
I've had to do that, yeah.
Yeah, and sometimes if that, there's cars in the queue, there's yeah, yeah, it just halts all the traffic, so. To me, traffic runs a little smoother through that intersection, the trucks are going the other way, but.
So, keep with, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go on, we're on.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Just Jake, the lay of the land, if it were to be approved tonight to move forward with this, where do we go from here?
The county would then have to do the same thing, make the same approval of the truck route. It was our kind of suggestion, so we brought it forward first. So, it would be us making approval and then the county would consider it.
And so, this comes out by Tenneco? Is that gonna, is that intersection, is that, I mean, what was the, any concern, I guess, down the road as far as does that need to be widened, does that need to be addressed? Or are we comfortable with the current engineering of that intersection to take on additional trucks? Even though it's not a huge number?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly a better intersection than what we have downtown. Although downtown, we have completely stop control or traffic light control. So, from that standpoint, it's a little bit safer, you don't have trucks pulling out in front of somebody because they should be at a red light. As far as horizontally, yeah, that S curve is kind of an issue. There's areas where they're way off tracking and there's no pavement there, so that's just a maintenance issue for us. But it is, you know, if you're gonna funnel the trucks to one location, which is what I would suggest, then that's what we do, and if we have to improve that intersection to make it better for trucks, then that's what we do.
I think one time, I think Sidney even talked about if we could run them all the way down to Fletcher and go over by where Saint Gregory the Great would come out, just to basically avoid all of the commercial on fifteen, especially since there's no dedicated turn lane at this time. But I think we looked at the cost of that to pay for the country road, and it's a pretty substantial stretch and therefore a pretty substantial cost. But one idea would be, or one thought is if we get enough interest in the rail campus that would need that kind of truck traffic, then maybe that would be a justification to incur that kind of expense in order to just avoid that whole area, just the whole congestion. Now, they do a super three or something where you have a dedicated turn lane on fifteen, it becomes less of an issue, but just the slow-moving cumbersome nature of the trucks and then cars darting in and out of the highway. But that's probably down the road.
And there is a, there is a left-hand turn lane into Tenneco, makes it a little bit easier for people going in and out of Tenneco, although it's, it's pretty nuts there, I'd shift change.
That's why I was gonna say, do you see any like two o'clock time problems?
Again, I don't see a ton of truck traffic that would really elevate my concern there, but two o'clock will always be an issue, I'd say that.
I would say me and Jonathan met with the plant manager out of Tenneco this spring, and they do have long-term interest in us looking to improve that intersection in the long term. Just, they weren't, you know, like distinctive about like we need it right now, otherwise we're gonna have all these issues. But they said just for the general benefit of truck traffic coming on and off there, that they'd like us to take a look at it too at some point, but.
I would not disagree with that.
Any questions or comments? Do you like a motion to approve it this time?
I'll make a motion to approve that we add truck route signs and create a truck route alternative route in Seward.
Give a motion and second, is there any further discussion? Sign off, please, rest of your votes, please display the votes. Can we get the logos up to look at? We're gonna skip ten here for one second while we get the logos pulled up, so everyone can point the same thing at the same time. Eleven, we have an administrative action, we're going to table eleven at this time, correct? I think they wanted to wait and do their presentation another time. So, while Jake's pulling that up on, for number, item number ten, we're going to table eleven. You want to do your report real quick?
Sure. You have the administrator's report. We continue to work through some more storm issues that took place over Memorial Day, especially in the Plum Creek area. That was our predominant issue, we didn't have terribly many concerns with the river, other than it did get relatively high. And we're coordinating with the Ag Society down at the fairgrounds. But we need to continue, the head water, the water coming down Plum Creek is getting more and more aggressive during these storm events for some reason. And so, it is scouring the edges of the embankment throughout the entire system by the bridges.
I have seen that.
It's something to be of concern for us, so we need to continue to monitor it and watch how it's elevating, especially down by East Seward Street. We're trying to do as much maintenance as we can, the weather, just in general, the weather has been wreaking havoc on all of our departments, specifically streets, parks and rec, public properties, cemetery, golf. Everybody's out trying to do anything, along with our rail campus project that's kind of stalling out because of the weather. We get behind, get behind, and we try to get out and go direct something, but it comes, is it go clean the right-of-ways? Is it go do the parks? Is it this, is it that? Because we have like a one-day window to send everyone out to as much as they can in one day, and then we're done. And usually, they're pulling overtime and everything else on those dates when there is an opening to try and get some time in. So, that has become a concern, because we have our projects. We're actively working, trying to finish the dam project, golf course, and get that thing settled and then put seed down. Hopefully, not be too late in the summer here when we're trying to seed that. And so, we have other projects that we want to get to, culvert issue over on Carol K. And just, we don't have any time with the weather doing what it's doing, so.
I have a question going back to Plum Creek. Is there something we can do to be proactive to fix any of that, or maybe not us, but like the N R D or?
We discussed, we have in our plans to do some riprap and some embankment work close to the trail. But at the rate that that rip, that creek is cutting itself, I don't know without putting riprap and embankment cover throughout the whole darn line. And that's, we're only looking at the section that's in the city. I don't know if the creek all the way up, I don't know how far up it goes where it's having these sorts of issues. And it's trying to cut itself out, because the embankment is getting really steep in town too. It's going farther down, not just trying to widen itself out and eat away the sides. So, we'll want to continue to monitor, it just also causes a huge mess. It continues to put sediment and everything on the trail that we have to clean off. It's like trying to clean mud off a slip and slide, it's hard to do. So, we'll continue to battle that and work on those issues. We're playing musical chairs with some of our summer help right now, just because of different issues, so that slows us down too. So, we'll work on those. Jake and I met at the Ag Society today to go over the trail, and we'll talk more about that today. But just kind of refresh ourselves with some of the stuff that's going on down there, some issues with the flooding and some things that we think we can do to help them out in regards to their wastewater sanitary system and how that goes into the lift station. And then just looking at Centennial Park and their usage of it and what goes on during the fair and things like that. So, we're trying to have a good dialogue with their board. Other than that, Jake, you got those logos ready? Okay, I'll answer any other questions you have about administrator report or anything else going on.
Need question or report? If not, give a motion to accept. The motion is second, is there any further discussion? Sign off, please, rest of your votes, please display the votes.
We'll jump back to item number ten. This is a consideration of new branding logo for City of Seward. Jonathan and his organization had approached us about wanting to look at a rebrand for the community as a whole. We saw it as an opportunity to also maybe address some of our own City of Seward branding as well. And so, the branding discussion has a couple aspects to it. One, specifically for the city, and then one that would lend itself to other departments as well. That would be a simple design that is a good, that works for both. It can be really small for letterhead or really big for a large sign, that it holds together well and is versatile enough that it can be, the different departments can also plug into the same type of design. And then that's what we're gonna discuss here tonight, what that could look like. We also have a designer here with us, so if you have any questions as to why that color, she is much better prepared to answer that question than I am. Because I, I see red, blue, and a few more colors than that apparently. And then the second part of this discussion, which would be for another time, but it ties into it, would be to have a similar styling of design for the rail campus and also for the downtown area that would look different from what the city logo would look like, but it looks like it's part of the same family or motif, if you will. So, that you can see there's a connection, but it's still set apart. An idea would be is that that styling, for our purposes, would be for maybe downtown, one for the rail campus, but it would be versatile enough that if Concordia wanted to do something similar or the National Guard Museum, these would be the non-government entities that would have a logo that would tie into what our logo would be. But first, we'd have to figure out what our logo, logo should look like, so. So, here's some of the ideas. You just want to scroll down and kind of get them, yeah, so that would be, keep going. So, what's the, there's the base, the first one had like the basic design, and then, so this would be a versatile logo that could go on anything. There's nothing specific to tie it to anything in particular. If you scroll down, then you have, this is one idea for the downtown, but what we're thinking of is maybe not using this exact styling for the downtown, but maybe come up with something similar, but different. If you go to the next one, Jake, this would be the idea for like the departments. You have a different logo element at the top there. This would be to show, to reflect the department and then have the department name here. So, this would work for any of the departments. It could work for the swimming pool, it could work for anything in the city that was sort of, that would be similar to that basic logo. And like I said, she's here, she can kind of answer any questions. I think the idea was to have something that would sort of have a historical look to it, and that's why you have the script, but have sort of the modern elements as well to tie that in to, to give, to give the, I guess, the impression that it's historic, but it's still modern and progressive at the same time. So, so for example, this gets a little bit technical in the typography, but you have serifs and sans serifs. And usually, when you have this type of, of, type of face, you're looking at a sans serif, and those are typically considered more of a modern look. The fancier, you know, would be more of a, if you had a serif type of font. But this is just one idea that she presented us with, that we talked about. There's nothing magical about it, it's just that we currently, if you know in our letterhead, we typically have that flag. It's sort of has Concordia outline, and then there's like the flowing flag.
Hill, looks like a hill.
Like a hill of flags, remember that all?
Rolling hills.
What's that?
It's rolling hills.
Rolling hills of flags.
Look, but there it is.
So, that's kind of what we use now. And so, the idea would be something maybe a little bit more of a design element, have a little bit more of a, have an updated look to it, and so.
I have a question. Isn't there also a seal?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay.
At one time, we talked about, our current seal is a circle that has the word seal in it. So, we talked about, I mean, it works, right? Yeah, so the idea would be is that we could also do a seal, but we primarily use that for documents. We have kind of, you see on this, we, there's sort of a makeshift circular design that also kind of shows up on stuff, but as far as having an official seal, we don't have that yet. And so, seals are a little bit trickier because they tend to be small. And so, if you have a lot of detail, you end up with a blob, because they just can't handle that size. So, but towards this purpose, we're looking at kind of the overall branding of a new logo. And again, this is something we have to keep for a thousand years. This is just something that we wanted to kind of introduce. And I think part of the hope would be is if, if everyone loves this, for example, then I think the Fourth of July committee would probably incorporate it into some of their Fourth of July stuff this year. If it's, if there's still other ideas out there, then.
Well, all that's been printed, so probably won't be incorporated this year.
I thought Clark had something he wanted to use it for.
He wanted to unveil it at the event tomorrow night.
Oh, okay. Well, that probably won't happen then.
So, I just found that out of my way here.
Okay, I knew you wanted it for something, but I didn't share all the detail. But anyway, what, I guess, this is more of a discussion, are there any, any thoughts or?
I do have a question for Jonathan. This was kind of your initial, was that accurate that Jonathan kind of said?
We've been discussing this for probably the past five years.
Yeah.
As we were looking at doing the downtime revitalization.
Right.
Part of that was going to be signage, and part of that was going to then require some kind of a logo. And so, it made sense to have something along the lines, I think there's.
Well, how does this fit in with what you're doing with your cultivating?
Yeah, so that, good question. As the mayor alluded to, we're just trying to integrate this across the Seward-related things. I think our organization is something that obviously is in the city, but in a sense, it's not like the historic downtown district or the rail campus. You know, we're an organization, it's okay to have separate distinct branding for that. But I think trying to integrate all these various institutions per se, their departments or.
I was just wondering, like with fonts, could you even just have it kind of the font kind, I mean, to make it consistent?
Between what, between which one?
Well, all of them, I mean.
Yeah, no, I think the idea would be is that, go to the other rail campus one that you have, so, because the one, so this would be like an example of if the rail campus wanted, if you wanted to have a separate logo for the rail campus, and we're gonna talk to the rail campus committee about what they would like to see. But one option would be is, this looks different than the other one, than the other logo. I mean, it's graphically different, but has a similar type of fonts and design elements. But you could, this is different than what we had in the very, the first one we showed you. So, the idea, so one idea was, the one that we first showed you, that would be like the city one that we would use for a city and for departments. That can be incorporated with a little banner that would say Parks and Recreation, and you'd have your little logo up top. And then, you know, this could be something for the rail campus that has a similar styling. So, you can put ours next to it, and it would say, okay, this is similar styling, but it's a different design elements to it, set it apart. And so, if that was the direction that the council wanted to go, then what we, the suggestion would be is do the same thing. And so if that was the direction that the, the council wanted to go, then what we, what the suggestion would be is do the same thing for, um, for like the downtown, because again, downtown is, is a loc- is a destination, um, separate from like the departments. So you can see they're next to each other on, on some kind of, on posters, you can see the similarities. So you can tell, okay, it's, it's a similar design, but i- it's unique so that you can tell it's different. Whereas the one, if you go to like the Parks and Rec one, for example, like, yeah, like this one, this, this is like the basic design for the apartments, for example. Uh, but it's, so the idea would be that they're similar, but they're different, so that you can tell that their branding is similar, but it's, it's, it's also, um, you know, it's a different purpose. Yeah, Sid.
Would it be possible to see some other concepts? You know, kind of like this one is, is okay. And I'm an, I'm a graphic designer, so I'm going to have a, a designer opinion. Great stuff, and Kaylee, did you do these?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't take any personal.
No.
I mean, these are great for like a T-shirt and stuff, but I just don't see these as kind of the official letterhead, city vehicle, you know, official correspondence look. Is why I'd like to see a couple other ideas. It's very festive looking, but the, the roughness of the, of the main text is a little too handcrafted looking to me to be really official, you know? Like maybe a little too vintage? Cause you can get too vintage to where it looks like you like need to buy a computer, cause you don't have one. So I would like to see a couple other concepts myself of something along that line of progressive yet vintage. But like Jessica was saying, with the font that you choose, if everybody incorporates that font in their different letterheads and stuff, then you can get consistency and identity. You can have the same branding identity across different departments, but.
Well, and I guess where I was coming from with that, so we just, I work in Fremont. The entire county, city, economic development group, chamber, everybody did a rebranding collectively. And everybody's as consistent through that whole spectrum. So I, I just didn't know if that was what you meant by the coordination or something like, I'm just asking.
You know, when we, when we discussed at rail campus, I think that's actually where we pushed it out for him to go out and have Kaylee do some work for us and see what things were like. Cause we were discussing the signage at the rail campus. I mean, the example I threw out there was when Lincoln rebranded, anything's up with Lincoln, this is Lincoln.
Right, like their, their city, their chamber, everybody's.
Doesn't matter what color it is, it always looks the same, same font, same little arrow pointing up scenario. And so I'm not going to have an opinion, because too many opinions, this will take forever to get done. So, but this is the path we want to go down and, and get something, so we are consistent. You know, somebody who I think may have been involved, and I won't throw names out, in the cultivate Seward didn't even like what's together and what that looks like, it just, it doesn't look it. And I agree with that, so. We need to, uh, come up with something and get it done in a timely fashion so that we can incorporate it with the stuff going on at the rail campus and get it done.
I guess I agree with Sid that I'd like to see something with the font that's a little more professional, looking for city purposes. It's a little too folksy for me, a little too, like someone's got a shaky hand. I don't, I like the concept though, I like all the concepts really well, it's just the font bothers me.
Do you see this going on, city vehicles, billboards, like all of that, too?
Do I see it? It should.
Okay, so that is the direction of a new logo?
That is the direction, I mean, if we're going to go and start utilizing a new logo, the intent is it's on our letterhead, it's on our website, it's on our materials that go out, it's on our vehicles. I mean, it might be painted on the water tower at some point. I mean, if it was something that was adopted for the long term, and we have a repainting, we don't know anything else to put up there, you potentially would put the, I'm just saying.
Right.
I mean, I've heard some, actually some really neat ideas for water tower painting, ideas for Seward that won't be our logo, but if it was something you'd want to use, you'd want to use your logo. Or you could do like the old, like, generic logo and use like the really blocky black letters with white background that says Seward.
Like the generic.
It works.
Generic beer.
Generic beer.
So, but, yeah. The other thing I want to reiterate, and I can, I think from the rail campus perspective and Jake's perspective is, if, if we're going to kind of continue down this, is the rail campus, because we do need to get the signage in there and we do need to kind of establish that, at least for the signage, we got to get that figured out sooner than later. I'm not saying this is or isn't the solution, that's to be decided by the mayor and his body. But timing is going to be an issue, otherwise that signage could be there for a while.
Is it airpark? What do they call that down by the airport? So is that become part of us, too, as far as asking them to add this design in to that? So as you come into town, it starts and it progresses that way? Or do we kind of click on to how they kind of have their font to blend it all in?
No, I, I would.
They're separate?
Yeah.
They're just a kind of indifferent entity, right?
We should, the mayor, it goes into the same thing there and kind of what you talked about, council member, is that we should try to get them all on the same page. Like even the airport authority should be on the same page. I know Beatrice, they did the same thing when I was there.
Well, I even wonder about the, the Ag Society eventually, as they upgrade their signage down there, if there was a way to synergize, you know?
Like if you're going to use the word Seward, places the only way you can present it, is that okay?
But then it's a, it's such stark contrast to connect Seward, what we did with S C C D P and then.
Well, if everybody likes something new, you could also integrate.
I don't know, yeah.
That's the other thing, I mean, to kind of off of, well, and just said, and also what Chris said earlier, um, you know, we've no problem having a discussion on this, but at some point, a decision needs to be made, cause otherwise it's just going to cost more money to, um, to think about it. If, if we need something, if we need more and more and more examples of what we could do, because quite frankly, the possibilities are, are endless.
That was the state's logo.
But I, I don't think it would take.
It's not for everyone.
It wouldn't take a whole lot of time or effort just to have like two, two other ideas, you know? Like, when I had my own project, I would always present a client, I always had my favorite, but I would present a client with three ideas that were all unique, so that, but I didn't present any, any of them I didn't like. So I could live with any of them, but, uh, I don't know, I just, I would like to see more than just one, one choice and say, this is what you have to decide on.
So I met with Josh like probably a month or two ago, and we had like ten examples and passed that through and went through those. And one of my first questions with Suzanne was when he first got started, is how many people are going to be deciding on what Seward logo? Because I've worked with bigger companies before and it takes forever when you have so many opinions. Question back and forth of that font's not modern enough, that font's too modern, like, it just becomes a huge headache. So we together kind of landed here with what he started with, the historic look tied in, m- even more modern, kind of aiming more at the younger generation, because that's the future of Seward. Um, making the history kind of cool looking was kind of like the goal. So, but yet making it very patriotic and very Fourth of July city-ish. So this is kind of where we've gotten from there. And like I said, we had more ideas, but once those other ideas get implemented with a larger group, it just becomes this huge mess, kind of, so.
That's the reason, it's just one.
I don't think you have agreement tonight, so you might have to bring us back at least a couple more of us.
Is it possible, Concordia's got a pretty good stamp as far as like what they do and the chamber does, too? Is there a way that you can like kind of incorporate something along that, too? See if we can tie it all in together with little elements of the ones that are kind of already there, too? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't know. So you want to tie it, you want to make it look sort of like the chamber's logo that they just did and, and Concordia's together?
I don't know, just so that you can kind of tie it in, so that it would kind of look like there's a little branch of this, a little bridge of this operative army.
Is it like, if you, I don't know the font specific on either of those, or, you know, if, are there elements that are across all of the, all of them in some way?
I think the problem we're going to run into is that everyone has a different philosophy behind their, their logo. And so I think rather than, um, you know, it's, it's like, it's like designing your offense every week for the defense you're going to play, as opposed to just saying, this is our offense, they have to stop us. And I'd rather have our logo, but you ought to decide you want to do it. And then if they want to incorporate, you know, something with their next logo, they sure can. But the idea was to keep it versatile enough so that they could fit it into what they want to do. But, I mean, we're also not going to dictate to, to, you know, private entities that they have to have a logo that's similar to ours. Uh, we just want to give them that opportunity, cause for some it makes sense. Uh, but for others, it may not make, make sense to be tied up directly to the city.
I think your concepts are great. I like the idea that you can morph it and change it across all the different areas, I think that's fantastic. I like everybody agrees that that's good. I think it's just a question of, are there a couple of other options that maybe we can look at? And, and is there a way, maybe not, maybe there's not, to look at some of the elements from some of these other things?
I think another one that might be helpful for Kaylee and the mayors, that if they hit the drawing board, is what do you think of the color scheme?
I'm, personally, I'm more of a purist on the reds. I'm, I like a little brighter red, but that's just me.
Brighter, do you want the traditional flag like?
Yeah, I'm a traditional flag red, yeah.
Royal blue and?
But I don't think that would surprise anyone in the room.
What? Whatever.
I, I believe tomorrow we'll sing, you know, God Bless America and all will be well in the world, so I'll just.
The only thing I have is, the issue I have is with the font. I just love the word Seward.
That's what I was going to say, what I was hearing mostly was where it says Seward and like rail campus, that it's just not a super clean script. If it was, if it was clean, a little sharper.
And, and maybe that's something, rather than come with, with a completely different design, it would be just to, um, smooth those lines out, that was your concern, right?
Yeah, just a font that's, that's more refined and more solid looking, not so hand.
And I think that if you do something like that, it'll stand the test of time. Where this can phase out in a matter of years, where you can keep it going for a longer time. Something a little cleaner.
Okay, any other suggestions?
Clear as mine.
And I know that the risk you run to trying to incorporate stuff is you end up with a chocolate oatmeal ice cream taco.
Anything else? Okay, we'll see what we can come up with and about what we're getting hurt and as soon as we can, so. Thank you.
Thank you for your help on this, Kaylee.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item we have is a feature request for council dinner items or administrative action. Uh, we have, uh, upcoming events, Jonathan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, tomorrow, of course, is the kickoff of the Fourth of July. Be there or be square, could be great as always. I would really appreciate what the, like, Seward Committee's effort to just make it a great event again this year.
Hey, and Jonathan on that, too, if you can make it, please, uh, in the past, they actually had their kickoff during this meeting, and so we weren't able to attend. And so I think part of the reason for moving it was so that city, uh, so we could attend if possible. So if you can, it'd be great to have everyone there.
Thank you. Uh, also just a couple of other quick upcoming chamber events. Um, we have business after hours on Thursday the thirteenth at Red Path. And, um, we have a professional development luncheon on Thursday the twentieth. And, uh, the topic is having tough conversations in the workplace. So, like, welcome to attend and join us for either of those upcoming events, thank you.
All right, thanks, Jonathan.
Do we want to note the Plaza dedication?
Uh, yes, Plaza dedication is going to be the night of the twenty ninth, uh, six-ish. Clark's in charge of that, too, so I haven't been given my full formal, uh, margin orders, but at six, six thirty, something like that. And I think he wants to serve hot dogs. Everyone is invited, open to the public, and I think he's going to put something in the paper, too.
All right, thank you. Next we have a strategy session, item thirteen. Uh, strategy session, we'll see attorney provide negotiation guidance concerning real estate interest on the Seward Bike Trail project. Kelly, you want to add anything?
The motion is, I move the city council going to closed session with the mayor, city administrator, city engineer, Jake Bosham. It's Shimmer and Associates, is that correct? And it's Doug Hawley. And the city attorney for the protection of the public interest and to discuss the City of Seward Bike Trail project, real estate interest and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for a period not to exceed. One hour.
Any more motion in a second? Motion in a second, press your votes. Please pay the votes. On the council's order to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and to discuss the City of Seward Bike Trail project, real estate interest and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance. We are in closed session.